All right, thank you everybody for coming tonight. The notice requirements is section one twenty-one, twenty-two of the Ohio Realize Code, and the implementing rules adopted by the board pursuant thereto were complied with through the meeting, Monday, February third, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. Roll call.
O'Neil here.
Rowley here.
Trustee Fullerton is ill, so he won't be here tonight.
If everybody could stand for the pledge, please. First item on the agenda is the minutes from January thirteenth. Everybody had a chance to review those?
I have.
Okay.
I've got one edit I went through with Kristen, second to last page, she referred to appropriations meeting, it should be organizational meeting, and then fiscal officer Rubensaw had some edits to it that I would say we should do it inclusive of hers as well. They're all pretty mild.
The ones that Laura, that you mailed out?
Yeah. I would motion to approve the minutes from January second.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes approved. Do you have a chance to review all of the departmental reports for the consent agenda?
I have. I do not have any questions or issues with them, do you?
Nope.
I'll make the motion to approve the department reports under the consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Laura, do you want to go over the fiscal, anything additional for fiscal?
Just that I wanted to let everybody know that on the township side, the Star Ohio accounts were merged, so the estates, the old estate fund and the old fire fund were merged into general, as per the auditors. The new account application has been submitted for the fire district, so the bond fund, we're getting that paperwork in line.
Was that all for fiscal then?
Yeah, unless you want to cover the BWC.
We may as well.
Okay. So our Bureau of Workers Compensation true-up was done, and our bill is six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, so I would ask that we appropriate that money for that bill to due February fifteenth. And then the salary allocation that's on the agenda was just to make sure that when we do our permanent appropriations, that for the service department, we allocate money for the township trustees and the fiscal officer.
I guess I have one question on the BWC, the true-up. For the workers' comp, I was looking back over the financials, are we, does that cover just the township employees, or township and?
Township and fire.
So why are we paying workers' comp on the fire district?
We went through BWC audit two years ago, and the way they have it separated out, you can fund it by code when you do the true-up, so I think it's ninety-four thirty-three is township and ninety-four thirty-nine is fire, and then they bill it accordingly. And the township always came out to be more than fire.
So throughout the year, we're paying workers' comp from the fire district? It's just this particular reason?
Right, right.
All right. I'll make the motion to approve an additional sixty-seven seventy-five for workers' comp appropriations.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And then you didn't need anything additional on the salary for tonight, just while we do permanent? Service?
Did you have a chance to see Richard Moore? There's nothing, nothing new on that, he's been pretty busy, salt and then following this last few weeks.
The only question I had on the service, I know we had a little bit of a, not really a hiccup, but a delay in getting salt delivery, was that a supply issue, a transportation issue, do we know what the reason?
I think it was a transportation issue on behalf of the salt suppliers. We were not the only entity that's late getting.
In talking with some of the other townships, they were dealing with the same thing, I'm just trying to figure out like, it wasn't really, didn't seem like it was excessively bad winter for us from that standpoint, so I, I guess there's something we can do next year to be in front of that, so in case we run into the same type of situation.
I mean, other than loading up maybe early on salt, we've got, I think he said we were like five hundred tons now that we've got, so we're in pretty good shape.
Fire chief, fire district report.
Good evening. We had sixty-nine calls in January. Forty-five were during the daytime hours and twenty-four at night, we had one in Chatham Township, one in the City of Medina, fifty-seven in Lafayette Township, five in Chippewa Lake, three in Gloria Glenns, and two in Seville. Sixty-seven percent were EMS calls, and the rest were just good intent and fire calls. Our average turnout time is a minute and fifty-nine seconds for that month, and a year to date is a minute and fifty-eight seconds, which is getting a little better day by day. And five minutes and twenty-eight seconds till we get on scene. We received mutual aid three times this past month, we gave mutual aid to Seville twice, Chatham once, and Medina City once. Some things we've been doing, we conducted a community blood drive on January eighteenth, they ended up with seventeen donations, thanks to, thank you Bob Angle for arranging this, we'll continue this program and offer those blood drives every few months. This past weekend, we participated in the Chippewa Lake Lions Club polar bear jump and run walk, this was a collaborative effort with Seville and Westfield Fire Departments. Our twenty-four hour staffing has begun with three personnel, and the majority of that this past month, we've been able to cover those shifts with three people, and with one medic per shift. We'd like to see the roster grow a little bit, so we can eliminate that hours, it's about thirty-eight, or twenty-nine to thirty-eight hours is the average for part-time employees, who want to kind of keep it that way. Our new phone system was installed, we're still working on some kinks on that, but it's working, if you send a voicemail to us right now at the fire department, we may not, may or may not get it, just an FYI, so always call my cell if you need something emergent, and my cell's on the, on the website, so. Our combination cutter spreader was delivered and in service on our med unit, which is a, it's a combination cutting spreader tool that's used for extrication, for auto extrication, so that's a very good tool that we're going to use in the future, and hopefully not that often. Dylan Warkowski is our EMA, Emergency Management student, he's going to be with us for a month, he's a intern for the month, and he was actually my high school student when I taught school about, I don't know how many years ago now, four years ago I guess, or so, so yeah, there's Dylan. Gabe Smith and Noah Gable have begun paramedic school at UH, and they're doing well so far, they're expected to graduate December of two thousand and twenty-five. Kelly Parker and Tara Powell are doing very well in paramedic school, and they're expected to be completed in August of two thousand and twenty-five. And Ben Grega has submitted his resignation, I sent the email to you, he was hired full-time in Seville, he also lives in Litchfield and works on their fire department, his resignation matters in the report. We'd like the board to consider the hiring of six individuals actually, so Spencer Pappas, Blake Paul, Ashton Porrick, Nathan Stankovich, and Austin Neal, firefighters and EMTs, three of them are currently enrolled in paramedic school. Also, the hiring of Javon Russell, he's a firefighter two, paramedic already, and is ready to start whenever, so. And last on my list, the promotion of the new officers, the two officers to engineer, Andrew Berger and Alex Thomas, both interviewed well last week, and have a vast experience in mechanical work, have committed to the hour requirements of the new job description, and will be a valuable resource for our department going forward. And then the recommendation of lieutenant positions for Tara Powell, a longstanding firefighter and EMT in our community, and she's in medic school. She's been serving the community outreach coordinator, is doing a fantastic job, she's active in the department and the community, which is great. And Dennis Bosch, Bosch, a more recent member of our department, is a regional coordinator for Summit County Hazmat Team, hazmat instructor and a paramedic firefighter for Macedonia full-time, so that's all I have right now.
Have you spoken to chief about the personnel?
Yeah. Yeah, the letter.
Well, not just that, while we're on that though, chief, I think we've both received your letter from earlier today, and I've got no problem with you moving forward.
Okay. So go ahead, there's, yeah, we don't need to, okay. There's a concession for that.
All right.
Have you spoken with the resignation and the complaints, what were filed against the personnel?
No.
I would make the motion then to accept Ben Grega's resignation, I'm assuming that's effective immediately?
Yeah, he put his resignation at the end of the month, he got full-time in Seville last month, and he wants to explore different opportunities, so.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would also, pending that, I'll pause it about the background checks, you did say those were completely correct.
Yeah, so we're using integrity verification now, and it's all encompassing, it's the background check, it's FBI, BCI, it gives the driver's abstract report, as well as a drug screening, so, and everything's coming back so far, so far all of them have come back, so with no issues.
I would make the motion then to hire Spencer Pappas, Blake Paul, Ashton Porrick, Nathan Stankovich, Austin Neal, and Javon Russell.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Awesome, we'll have seven new paramedics at the end of this year.
You'd motion for moves to lieutenants or engineers?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I would also make the motion to appoint Andrew Berger and Alex Thomas as engineers.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And I filed a motion to approve the promotion to lieutenant for Tara Powell and Dennis Bosch.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thanks, chief, thank you. Zoning, Sherry is not with us this evening, but she did submit her report. January was a bit slower, we had six permits written, one was a new home on Ryan Road, fences, and three ag exempt buildings. We will be holding a public hearing tomorrow evening to discuss potential nuisance at seventy-one seventy-six Hunter Drive, that'll be at six thirty tomorrow evening. She did want to update the property on Technology Lane across from Safety Service Building is under new ownership again, and there have been preliminary discussions on potential site plans, whether get further down the process, that'll be made public as well, or you know, they'll have their hearings and meetings. We did swear in Kevin Pyatt as an alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and two new members of the zoning commission, Lee Wienerman and Tim Kasuf. Also, to, next Tuesday, the zoning commission, next Tuesday, March eleventh, is it the eleventh? Well, yeah, next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but eleventh.
Not February's meeting, but March's meeting, so we'll have February's meeting to discuss it and prepare.
Okay.
As a commission, and then March eleventh would be.
But you want people to attend February or March?
Probably March.
Okay, all right.
It's kind of how I had it, I haven't talked to Karen about it yet, but that's kind of how I had.
The zoning commission's working on finalizing the language for local commercial, and given that that's kind of been a hot button issue for some of the residents with different development that's been discussed and done over the last couple of years, the zoning commission would like to welcome anybody, you're always welcome anyway, but just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that that was the topic that would be on the agenda for that evening, so anybody that would be interested in sharing their thoughts, that's the night to do so. I don't, we had discussed this last year, we did it on the same timeframe, here's Sharon and Karen, Sherry and Karen had gone through all of the zoning fees and just updated them to be a little bit more in line and consistent, there were some, you know, we did them last year, and some little tweaks just to make things more consistent across the board. I don't know if we want to do those with Ty not being here this evening, but the plan was hopefully to be able to just implement those starting March first, like we did last year. What are your thoughts?
Probably best to let him table it.
Yeah, all right. Public comment?
Actually.
Oh, please, sorry, sorry Lieutenant Markham.
You skipped completely over the.
Fire chief talks for thirty minutes, and now you're skipping me.
Well, wait, now you picked a knife to go about that. You're coming up this?
Kevin, I'll give me some time, this is a thing. I did send over the final year end at the end of the day, I don't know if you guys were able to see that or not, but September first, this past September first, was our six full years of providing police contract services to Lafayette Township, and there's three more years that remain on the current contract. Some of the larger categories in the past year that I wanted to talk about with numbers, we responded to a hundred and thirteen alarms, we assisted another agency, which most of the time is the fire department, four hundred and eighty-six times, we do respond or try to respond to every fire and EMS call in the township. There were a hundred and fifteen citizen assists, extra patrol requests, eight hundred and two, two hundred and fifty-three times we ran radar in the, or laser in the township, we had ninety disturbance calls, fifty-two domestic calls, thirty-one fraud or identity theft calls, eighty-nine non-injury crashes, and forty injury crashes. And we had two hundred and forty-five traffic stops, and favorite, I think, of the residents are, is, are, well, the vacation watch program that we offer, and we had six hundred and four vacation watches in two thousand and twenty-four. So the grand total of incidents in two thousand and twenty-four was just over thirty-seven hundred. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
I do not. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we'll do public comment. Any correspondence?
The only correspondence I had was from today, the land reutilization letter, I have the opinion that I'm probably not interested in this one, residential property.
Well, last year, I think we had, we had talked about just having a, because it doesn't commit us to anything, and then ultimately it probably gets resolved without it being there, but it reserves us the right to, if we want to down the road, so I think we stick with that for now, but. But yeah, outside of that. Okay. And then I had, the only correspondence I had, we, I had a resident over on Lake Road reach out, mailbox issue, forward it to the county, county went ahead and took care of it, and then obviously we had the correspondence from last month that we discussed as far as the trustee elected official compensation, but still, I haven't heard anything back from the prosecutor's office on either. Okay, all right. Unresolved business, the old siren at Lions Park, I know we discussed that at the last meeting, was there any further?
I reached out to the gentleman, I'm actually meeting with him at the property next week.
Okay.
He said it's pos, it's probably a couple thousand dollars minimum to repair it, but he's in agreement that the new siren at the town hall down there at the village will more than compensate for the radius of influence from the Lions Park sirens, so we'll go through some options, and he'll give me, you know, whatever recommendations he has on it.
All right, and the thought process still is hopefully he can just remove it and clear that out.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I put employee handbook on here, but I don't know, I mean, I know Ty was, I don't know if there's anything further on that, we've been talking about it for a while.
I don't have anything, I mean, if you want to talk about specific things, we can, I don't really have anything that I'm planning on talking about with it. But before we move to new business, I do have a couple updates on unresolved.
Okay.
Drove by the Harker and Ryan Road lot, last meeting, the lady came.
Constructed view?
Yes, it looks like there's a bunch of vegetation that's been cut down there now, it was not from us, I don't know if it was a utility corridor thing from along Harker, it looks like there might be new utilities being laid there, so.
Yeah, there's the new home being built.
Yeah, that, but it looks like it's much more bare than it was, so.
Okay.
Spoke with Kimball following our meeting last month, you had.
The trash.
Yeah, and they said they would forward that onto their route drivers.
Excellent.
And then I don't know, you said there was another mailbox, you would say it was County Road?
Yeah.
Did they address that with their current policy, or what is it, thirty-five dollars?
I actually, after, you know, after our meeting, I did speak with, I visited the county, and just to kind of get a feel on how they do it, and they had twenty-four, yeah, twenty-four incidents last year for two thousand and twenty-four, they did nine repairs, and that's what this particular one was, obviously the county has a significantly larger road department, so they were able to send somebody out that day to repair it and at least get it up and running, and then they've replaced fifteen, they replaced fifteen mailboxes in two thousand and twenty-four, but their policy does still remain the same of, you know, thirty-five dollars.
I think that's something we might want to revisit, I don't think we today, but I mean, leaving it on a case-by-case basis every time might be a.
I didn't necess, to clarify the last meeting, I don't think it was so much that every single one needs to be on a case-by-case, but like when there's, you know, clear evidence that it was something where it was.
Because we always have the opportunity to.
Right, and that's more what I was looking at from a standpoint of not just automatically defaulting to, like, in every single situation, we're only going to do the thirty-five, you know, because obviously there are a lot of cases where we're not going to be able to validate exactly what happened.
Right.
But then there's going to be other times with all the technology that's out there, some, sometimes it will be caught on camera, or we will have, you know, and when it is something that it's our fault, I think we should, you know.
Make it right.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't have anything else for new business?
Under new business, I know we, I mean, we have permanent appropriations listed, I had them for the last meeting.
Right.
I know without what Ty's absence, do we, I don't know how much we need to tweak them from where we were last month.
Did Ty happen to provide any feedback to you, Lauren? I mean, I don't know, we can talk about it, I don't know if you want to, or, again, that might be something best to have all three of us present on.
We can get that done at the beginning of the March meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Lafayette cleanup days.
Kristen, you've got the costs from twenty-three and twenty-four, correct?
It was like, just under, yeah, it was a little under, one here. It was like eleven hundred and twenty-three and fourteen hundred something in twenty-four.
Well, we had almost double the amount of vouchers handed out last year than we did the year before.
Did we just not get a lot of them back? Because the cost wasn't that big of a difference.
It might be that the total refuse wasn't as much.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, well, and it depends on how much they, they don't.
I think it's a well-received program.
Oh, absolutely, I was just trying to get an idea of, do we want to set a, I know we appropriated money as part of our.
I would say probably the same as last year.
Was it April first to July thirty-first, is that what we did?
Correct.
Does that sound like a reasonable timeframe?
Yeah.
I'd make the motion to open up our Lafayette cleanup at days again with vouchers similar to the last few years from April first to July thirty-first.
With one per address?
One per house, yeah, same rules as last year, they provide you identification at the.
Yeah, because they have to bring their license or.
Driver's license or utility bill.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then for health insurance renewal, I had the opportunity in speaking with Scott Nossi, I know he had contacted, I think everybody got a chance to talk to him a little bit last year, and, you know, we've been talking about it for a while now, I was trying to figure out, you know, how to maybe tweak the health, health coverage to still provide an adequate level of coverage for the employees, but, you know, maybe be a little more fair to the taxpayers that are footing the bill. And along those lines, in speaking with Scott, I know last year, we kind of just looked at the different renewal options that we had from our current provider, but one of the things that limits our ability to shop the plan in full is not getting form fire, form fire and those full details. So I know that it requires, you know, the surveys to be filled out by each of the members, you know, but I'd like to see us do that, and the biggest thing is, not only does it allow them to get more competitive quotes from the current providers, there are a number, Suma, Medical Mutual, won't even quote a plan without, without doing that form fire, so I don't know if we necessarily needed a formal action, but I wanted to kind of get your thoughts on, you know, not necessarily the biggest fan always of putting down a mandate, but, you know, in this particular case, I think we really need to require that, you know, if you want to be able to cover.
Digital information, especially sensitive information stored on YouTube, and that's what the form fire is, but maybe we start with asking the employees first to see if they're willing to, I mean, because I think everybody knows that there's probably an adjustment on the horizon with what we have to do, and if that's a way for us to be more competitive, see how they feel about it first, it's personal information being stored by big brother.
Well, yeah, I get that, but it's also, you know, I think our, our health premiums for last year were a hundred and thirty-four thousand, I think, if I'm working up, you know, it's not a, it's not a small expense.
Right.
You know, and if we can do anything to cut that down, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you personally, you'd be okay with, I know it's not a mandate, but it's going to be, and it's.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm kind of with you, and I agree, it's.
Ultimately, somebody.
It might be a necessary evil in the interest of.
Ultimately, whoever we do health insurance through gets all that information.
Right.
In the end anyway, so, you know, it's not a matter of, you know, it's out there anyway, so don't worry about it, I'm not trying to take that stance, but, you know, again, I think private employers kind of lean on that a little bit more, you know, so.
I'll reach out to the employees.
Okay.
Start, I mean, start, right?
Well, ultimately, it winds up being the service department, and then the four of us, so.
Right.
You know, but yeah, if you, if you would, just because we've got renewal dates, May first, so that's going to be coming up here in the next thirty, well, but within the next thirty days, we'll want to get somebody else shopping. What are your thoughts on at least, even if we don't do the form fire, which, I mean, I hope we do, but if we don't, I mean, we still, because I don't think we even had Scott quote them last year.
He was not able to get anything outside of, because of the form fire, there may have been one, but he couldn't beat what we had in place.
Okay.
It didn't go anywhere, but yeah, I think it might be a necessary able to try to spur competition.
Well, and the other thing too is, you know, again, it's not, you know, we don't store the information when the employees fill out the survey, like, we won't have a copy of it, the broker, you know, shop in the plan for us won't have a copy of it, it's directly into the form fire system, so, you know, at least alleviates some of the concerns of how many people wind up having access to that.
Did you reach out to Scott Nossi this year?
Yeah, just to follow, because he had sent that email, checking on that, so I had reached out to him just to clarify what exactly he would need.
Yeah.
In order to be able to shop it for us.
I told my follow-up boyfriend to.
Okay. All right. And then, no public comment?
I have a question.
Oh.
Do you guys have any objections to the appropriations you already did? The reason I'm saying is because I have to close UAN by February twenty-eighth, I thought you guys did a pretty good job aside from not allocating the salaries in two thousand and thirty-one, you can always supplement or revise, so is there?
For, like, for the permanent work we discussed, I mean, I was fine with, I just know, you know, we tabled them at the January thirteenth meeting, because of other things that we're doing and having more time, I don't think Ty planned on not being here. I know chief had a tweak.
So I had a couple tweaks, like, well, fire safety services, contracting services, I'd say the bench testing, and we'll put that into the appropriations, it's about two thousand a year. Next year, we're going to have to do the actual amount, we have to do the hydro testing on the bottles, which is going to be much more extensive, I'll get a quote for that, but this year it'd be about two thousand dollars. And then I was, so like, there's different things, and on my budget, it's, I look and find like different spots where like integrity verification doesn't fit in.
I, I look and find like different spots where like integrity verification doesn't fit anywhere. And that's like the professional tech services that we had, but now we don't. So I'm wondering if we could potentially put something in there to, for those kind of things. Everything else is pretty much covered, I believe, but, um, well, the repair and maintenance of the station, it's had to be determined. That was another thing. So if we're not gonna do professional tech services, the repairs of the station would fall under that, like garage doors would always fall under professional tech services. Uh, our air compressor right now is gonna get serviced. That's gonna be a four hundred and twenty-dollar service charge. So that's a, a professional tech service or, or it's gonna be repair and maintenance for the station. So.
Yeah, you and I can get together and talk about the different, like, priorities.
Okay.
I think we're a little bit opposite, but
I mean, these
Gotcha.
These numbers were pretty much directly from our, um, work session there in December. I think what Laura is asking, if I'm hearing correctly, is should we put these in place? We can always tweak them
Yeah.
based on that. Um, and I think we left
Haven't gotten the end of year, um, our new certificate yet based on the end of year bonuses, but, I mean, I don't
That's fine. We left the, uh, resolution numbers open, correct? We didn't use seven on either side, right?
I don't think we did.
Right, we left Those were the ones that we had. Well, no, cause we did, uh, a bonus township side for something, I think, or the fire district side. Yeah, I mean, we, we can work right off of these. That's not an issue. I can update the dates
Yeah.
from the one before, then we can just tweak them from there.
Yeah, and I'm okay with the days. And then, you know, she wanted to add the sixty-seven hundred dollars for, uh, BNC to it. And then the only other one was allocating from Roden Bridge for
Right, so it was fourteen thousand eighty-eight dollars for trustee salaries for the year and twelve thousand three twenty-eight fifty for fiscal officer's salary.
Okay, I guess my question is why, like, I get stuck on why we don't just take it all out of general. I mean, I know we can, but it seems like it's an extra step for
Right.
for no reason. We made the adjustment to the general fund when we adjusted Millage. We didn't want to adjust it more because we wanted leave money in Roden Bridge. So it seems like
Did we account for all, all the salaries out of general to begin with?
For, for the elected officials, we did, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, and you're right, it's probably a, in the end, it's a wash. It can come out of either one.
Right.
Yeah. We don't have to take it out of the Roden Bridge fund.
Any reason we have to? I mean, I, I mean, so for now, I would just, I mean, again, we can always make that adjustment down the road, but I think for now, let's leave it the way that it is.
Okay.
Alright, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, what, you want totals for, or you want to just do it?
Well, just, I mean, yeah, I would just do it in court. I mean, if you want to read through every single one of them, we can, but, I mean, we can Right.
Yeah, I would make the motion, uh, on the buyer district side to approve permanent appropriations for exhibit A in the schedule.
You want to put it to, just to put the total amount on there?
Yeah. At the very bottom?
Yeah.
The, uh, one million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents. And that is inclusive of the, uh, bond fund.
Correct. I'll second. Roll call vote?
O'Neal, yes?
Parola, yes? Fullerton is not here.
I would make the motion on the township side to approve, uh, permanent appropriations for, uh, per exhibit A for a total of one million, seven hundred thirty-five thousand, fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll second. Roll call vote?
O'Neal, yes?
Parola, yes? And Fullerton is not here. One last time, any public comment?
A quick question.
Yeah.
Just about the mailboxes.
Yeah.
Uh, and who came through with the fiber last year? Reason being, one, they, they put that cable, it, it's right by where my mailbox is and I have to dig for a new mailbox.
Okay.
So, um, do I call eight-one-one with that or do I have to call a cable? And then part B is I have to call the cable anyways because they've got, I don't know if anyone else has this problem, but they've got whatever that black thing is just laying in my yard, spent there over a year.
I think two of them came through last year, uh, Medina.
Medina fiber, lit fiber, yeah.
Frontier came through later in the year. They still got flags and work to be done in my yard. If you're gonna do it yourself, definitely call eight-one-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but last time I called, they're, they're, they only do certain things. So I don't know if they'll, I mean, they may have, they will know who has it though, I believe.
Yeah, and I would, I, I'm pretty sure, cause you're talking about over on Lake Road, right?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's lit fiber. Cause Frontier was
I don't know.
More towards
Frontier, yeah. They both came through the appropriations, but
Anything else?
Nothing else for me. Motion to, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Nine?
Seven oh six.